Yeah.
First thing we know. We are, uh, we are live, microphones are hot.
We'd like to figure out anyone that's got fingers in front of them.
It's always your fault.
When not. And one gets to tell like a text really. Uh, Leila.
All right, I'm.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks everybody for coming tonight. Go ahead and do roll call. Deb?
Here.
Michelle?
Here.
Larry?
Here.
Megan?
Here.
Sarah?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented or amended?
There, there's actually a couple, couple quick updates before we run that. The Berry tender, uh, number 12 is no longer needed.
Okay.
And I think, uh, there was a motion to, um, uh, Deb, if you want to go.
Yeah, I would like to have, uh, under the consent, number seven, move down.
Hold out.
So we, yeah.
Oh, to put it in the regular?
Yeah.
Yep. Please.
Now I will take a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the changes.
Second.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended. Any other questions? Now, go to vote, Deb?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Now we'll move on to the consent agenda without number seven.
General Lou, I'm good for the junior, yes, General Lou.
Motion to second to approve the consent agenda. Questions?
I'd like to just comment on number five, the pool committee. You have the minutes there and I've attended all the pool committee meetings. And I do have to say, there is excellent discussion and the people there, I think, enjoy each other's ideas. And, um, I, I've also been down to the pool five times now to see, generally to see what is happening. And during the day when I go down and talk with them and that's, always been interesting and lots of action going on down there. And on the last day, I was at a Monday, uh, yesterday, whatever, there were seventy to eighty people in attendance. And it seemed like it was a pretty good crowd and probably Dino has even more that you would want to share. But it looks, I mean, I'm pleased with how things are going.
Yeah, I share your opinion. I concur.
I was there in fact.
You will go to vote. Michelle?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
All right, update presentation to be administered.
There's not going to be any updates outside of what we have on the agenda, so.
Perfect. All right, so we'll go to new business. Uh, we'll do number seven, resolution twenty-five thirty-eight approving a class C alcohol license for Franklin Hotel LLC. I'll make a motion. I'll second. Michelle, second.
Great. Um, so this is, uh, if you remember, the, uh, alcohol license that you tabled pending more news on the, the state of the Franklin Hotel. Um, I talked to the food inspector and, uh, they sent me a report which is in your packets, um, just about some recurring issues that they find every time they, they go about food handling and stuff like that. Each time the issue is resolved on the spot, but it is a recurring issue, you'll see in the report. And then, um, I also spoke to, I emailed back and forth with the fire inspection department. And they don't have an actual report on the state fire inspector's visits. Uh, but the head of the department is talking to the inspector and they were unable to get us a, um, even just a email note, uh, for this meeting. Um, but there are, there are findings and there are opinions on it. And, uh, since the, uh, since this has been tabled, they've ripped out the bar. Um, and their intention was to, um, you know, have that area available for rent if people wanted it to use it for parties. Total disrepair right now. Um, I spoke to the owner of, uh, of the Franklin, uh, and reiterated our concerns about the heater. Um, he was insistent that the space heaters that they were using to heat the upstairs were up to code per the state, uh, um, inspector. I, again, that's, that's his testimony, not the state inspectors. Um, you know, our, or our fire chief, uh, is not in concurrence with that. Um, everybody knows you're not supposed to plug in space heaters with extension cords. Uh, so there is some ongoing, um, question about the, the state of, you know, the building. Um, there were a couple of patrons that stayed the night over the weekend. Um, I heard secondhand that they were not satisfied that there was cold water late at night, like, like if the water heater might not have been working. Uh, there might have also been a, a bug issue or two in the room. So, uh, in my opinion, this, the state of the Franklin Hotel is, you know, not up to what it should be. Um, again, I don't have an opinion on, on your approval of the liquor license, but, uh, it is a very important license. And, um, you know, it's, it's worth the discussion about whether or not, uh, you know, the hotel needs to meet a certain standard in order to be able to sell alcohol there.
I want to say that I'm very disappointed in what they have done over there to not bring it up to date and up to code. And I've been involved in restaurants long enough to know this does not look good on this inspection report.
Mm-hmm.
This does not look good. And not having the other reports, I, we either table this or we deny the license totally is what I say. I'd like to hear some other discussions, but I feel that there's no way I could vote a yes and approve that with what's been gone on there.
Yeah, I should, I should also add, I asked them, if you ripped out the bar, you know, why do you need the liquor license? And, and they said that they wanted to be able to serve alcohol to the dinner and lunch patrons. But, as you know, like those hours have also been dwindling pretty substantially, so, um, you know, obviously, you, you know, it's a, it's a big decision. Like liquor licenses are a big deal and, you know, if, if, uh, there's a situation where if the food handling is questionable, if the conditions are questionable, um, you know, it's, I, it's easy to say yes, it's hard to say no, but I, I do believe there's a fiduciary duty to, um, you know, use these licenses as a way to keep, you know, businesses in compliance with best practices.
I don't think this is the first time we've heard. I know, I haven't heard from people that have stayed there, touched them, they say that the rooms are
Yeah.
not cleanly or taken care of.
Yeah.
When would their license officially be out of date?
Uh, actually, last month it officially, it's, it's in the pending state, so, uh, like, we're in the crunch time now. Like, if it doesn't get approved tonight, it's, it's over and they would have to reapply for a liquor license, which is not the end of the world. It's not that difficult to do. Uh, the state of Iowa makes it pretty easy to, uh, you know, to, to reapply, so, um, but, uh, but we've given them ample time to make improvements. I mean, this has been going on now for months and months. And, uh, you know, the improvements to the heating facility in the basement have not been made. Um, the conditions have further deteriorated, you know, based on, you know, firsthand, you know, looking around the inspection of our fire chief. Like, it's just not in good shape. And, you know, to the point where there's potential danger there.
If we tabled, does that mean they have to close up shop?
Not the, not the hotel. If, if we tabled it or voted no, they would not be able to serve alcohol until such time that the council were to vote yes on, on a license. So they wouldn't have to close the hotel, but they would not be able to serve alcohol, uh, at lunch or dinner, or, or anytime for that matter.
I want to say, if I remember right, I looked back and we tabled it in December.
Yeah.
Well, that's the date on this application, December.
Yeah. It's been a while.
Did he write the update on it?
I think he just wrote the.
I, I wrote, I wrote the update.
Oh.
Yeah, I was just keeping notes there so that we could see, you know, where we've been. I mean, the, since December, the intent of tabling it in December was that improvements were supposed to be made at the hotel. Those improvements were very clearly articulated. The fire chief gave a, a long list of improvements that needed to be made. Um, you know, you can't heat the upstairs of a hotel with temporary space heaters. Like, it's, it's just not. And those issues have not been mitigated. Now, those space heaters are, you know, allowed, like, you can use a space heater. The question is.
It's a temporary fix.
It's a temporary fix and the, the permanent fix, which is, uh, you know, requires capital, um, has not been done.
Is there a reason that they give that these things have not been done?
Personally, when I spoke to the owner, there was a level of ambivalence, um, against having to heat the place with an actual heater. Uh, he was perfectly fine using the space heaters and said that, uh, that they are approved for use, which is true. They could, you know, you can plug in a heater, but the building standards are just not there, especially for, you know, a hotel, um, and a residence. You know, they're renting some of those rooms for sort of permanent residence. And it, it's just, you know, our, our own fire chief i- is very, very concerned. Uh, you know, there's been a couple of incidents where the fire department has had to go over there with, you know, either a small fire or smoking cords. And, uh, to not want to mitigate that by putting it in the appropriate, uh, heating system is very concerning to me. Like, I, I think if the city council lets that go, uh, you're looking at a potential, like, fire there, you're looking at potential loss of life. There's a lot at stake by not having the right equipment to heat that place.
Do you think if we table this, that that will be seen as an incentive to do something and things will get moving?
I, I hope so.
That would be a temporary.
It really hasn't since nobody handled a bus.
Yeah, yeah.
Things have only gotten worse.
Oh, yeah.
Things have gotten worse since December, they haven't gotten any better.
And, I mean, you took the entire bar out, so.
Yeah. And, and it's, I don't know if anybody's peeked in there recently, but it's not, it's not, it's not looking good over there. And it's sad, so to answer your question, like, it may be an incentive to get things up to snuff, or it may be an incentive to sell it to an entity that might have the capital to invest there to, you know, get it up to the standard that it should be. I mean, it's a landmark.
Yes, yeah.
Well, my idea is we've already, it's over six months now.
Yeah.
Well, tomorrow or the next day, whatever. And we've seen what's happened over there in this length of time. If tabling it would have helped, I would have said, fine, but there's not been any indication that that's how. I would say we're going to decline it and if things improve, he can, he can come back to us. But that's, that's my opinion. I don't want the city to be held responsible saying, well, we've kept tabling it, well, you know, you guys.
Yeah.
Well, my concern is, you know, if the liquor license we're approving, if things, and that's a big responsibility for a business to serve liquor and there's a lot of things to keep up on, on that. And if they can't keep up on these small things in their building for the big things and the small things.
Well, it's not a bar, a bulk of their revenue is not going to come from alcohol.
Right.
Right.
No. No.
Yeah, yeah, if, if I had a vote, I would be voting no. Like, I, I just, I think that this is too great a responsibility and if there's no demonstration of wanting to get back into compliance, have a safe operating place. And having vigilance toward doing that, um, that just indicates to me, you know, a combative sort of nature and, and I fear, you know, you've got people traveling through town staying there, you've got families going and having dinner there. Uh, you know, it's, it's just one of those things where I think to have a really nice community, we have to have standards and we have to maintain those standards.
We want the homeowners around town to have standards just in their yard. And that's nothing compared to serving the public that's coming through here.
Yeah.
And he's not here, he's not sent you a statement to us?
I, I spoke to him, I told him, we're going to discuss it, invited him to the meeting if he wanted to attend. Um, he's not here. Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, so we have a motion and second to approve. So we will go to vote. Larry?
No.
Megan?
No.
Sarah?
No.
Deb?
No.
Michelle?
No.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Okay, now we vote to number ten, motion to allow Ender Park to be used for the Android Family Singers on July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Motion and second to approve the use of Ender Park.
Sorry, I didn't put that, this is, this is an event sponsored by the, uh, by the museum, so, they, annual event that they do there. I should put that in the line.
Can I mention to allow Dino on something like this, that there isn't any, there shouldn't really be any discussion. It's just something that they always do every year, just to put it under the consent agenda.
I mean, we approve other things that people do the same every year, I think it should still come.
No, I think she was saying, should we put it on the consent?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, where we don't have to discuss it, is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I get what you're saying.
Is this in conjunction with bluegrass, I'm assuming?
I ask you a quick question, anybody know better?
It's kind of that thing we, we, we do. Okay.
Okay, so we've got a motion and second. Any other questions? We'll go to vote. Megan?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Number eleven, resolution twenty-five forty, establishing citywide fireworks guidelines for any Sunday weekend. Second. All right, motion and a second.
Great, uh, so there's a small typo, this June thirtieth should be July second. So the.
The third, the state.
The third, sorry.
Okay. Yep, July third.
Yeah.
Permitting use safe.
Yes.
Is that what we're having?
Yes.
Yeah, and so I spoke to the police chief a little bit about it, so, you know, a couple of changes. The, the state has made it so that we can't restrict, um, the use of fireworks, but it has to be on private property. Uh, so we're going to be a little vigilant about people doing it out in the streets in lots that aren't their property. Um, and not only that, but they have to be doing it safely, you know? So it's, it's one thing to be able to do it on your property, it's another thing to set off fireworks that could put fire to three or four surrounding buildings. So, um, you know, we'll be watching, listening and making sure that, uh, to the best of our ability, that people are being diligent and safe with the, with the fireworks displays.
Is the time just standard?
I know, I was curious, why in the morning?
Yeah.
Too short of time.
Why you know that?
Why in the morning? You can't see how many.
Uh, you know.
And basically, it's usually people that, you know, I mean, just.
Shoot them off.
Yeah.
You know, the people that are like, you know, following up at that time.
Yeah.
It's, uh, it's very loose now. It's, they loosen it up a lot.
But like ten P, ten thirty P on the standard, is that?
That's, that's the, the, the state suggestion, so. And then, you know, we also, we have had a couple of letters come in from, like, vets that have PTSD. And, you know, just letting it go super, super late at night might be, you know, a, a little cumbersome, so, uh, it, ten thirty seems reasonable.
If they can't get them fired off, you know, from nine AM and thirty, while I'm trying to keep my dogs corralled.
I just, I like, it's one thing, like.
No, I, I, I totally hear you, yeah, I'm, I'm, uh.
I mean, this is, fireworks are not a new concept.
Right, right.
Fourth of July.
Yeah, these are, these are just the guidelines, you, you can alter them as you wish. Like, if, if there's, uh, you know, support to, to change those hours, let me just put that as a start.
Excuse my name, please.
I mean, yeah, we always, I mean, even when it was very strict, like, always were, I mean, it's fourth of July, it's.
It's a Friday, too, that's why, I felt like I just.
Yeah.
I mean, we're, we're definitely going to look out for the public hearing, yes, like, I mean, if people are lighting off, like, great fireworks, like, over top of people's houses and stuff, like, it's going to be addressed. But, you know, some kids on those sparklers and lighting up potter eyes and stuff. If it's at eleven o'clock, like, it's a little aggressive, but it might not be the same in some places, big ones or somebody's house.
Yeah.
And it's not like we're going to be patrolling at ten thirty-one either. You know what I mean? But if a complaint comes in at midnight, you know, then at least we've got something to, to lean back on.
Well, I'm sure there will be.
So, I mean, now we know where the fireworks displays. Ten fifteen, I'll be rolling by, like, yeah.
Come on in. And I suggest, under permitted use states and hours, July third and July fourth from nine AM to ten, because it makes it sound like July third from nine AM through July fourth, it's a ten thirty.
Oh, yeah, that's a good, yes.
Yeah.
Good, good catch.
We need to have and in there.
Yeah, right, I'll, I'll put and in the, uh, in the resolution.
Damn, I was trying to sneak it.
I was like, it's not going to be at two o'clock in the morning. Then did take over the wording. All right, any other questions?
Yes, did we, um, the tobacco license for nades?
Oh, that's already cleared in that.
It's been agenda that was approved. Oh, oh, sorry.
Oh, that's okay. All right, if nothing else, we'll go to vote. Sarah?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Number thirteen, motion to set public hearing for voluntary annexation of lot six in the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter of section sixteen, township ninety-one, on July twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, at six PM at City Hall.
I still make the motion.
I agree.
So this is the barred annexation, um, and, uh, we, per the law, we set a meeting between the city and the county. The county did not show up to the meeting. Uh, we informed them of their seven-day window to offer any, uh, insight, um, back to us. And also, uh, that they have until July thirteenth to do a, a resolution for or against. Um, either way, if the county doesn't, can't stop it from happening, they can only do a resolution for or against for your consideration. And, uh, and the reason we have to have a special meeting for it is because there are notification requirements of fourteen days after the public hearing is published. So, uh, we'll send, we'll send a notification to the Press Journal and then we have to send by certified mail, like packets, to all of the affected properties, utilities, so on and so forth.
It's supposed to be the twenty-third?
Yeah, the twenty-fifth is a Friday.
Twenty-third.
Okay. We're not really doing it on a Friday, no.
I'm having a bad week. All right, so twenty-third, sorry. Yeah. This is what happens when you type two bets.
And when you get interrupted.
That's right. Uh, yeah, so, uh, sorry, Wednesday, the twenty-third at six PM.
Okay, perfect. Any other questions? Do we need to amend the motion or just?
No, no, the motion will be.
On the floor.
Set the motion for the twenty-third.
Okay, all right, so we've got a motion and second, so we will go to vote. Deb?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
All right, number fourteen, motion to discuss updating zoning requirements for carports.
Make some move for a discussion.
Great. Okay, so we've had, um, we've had some, uh, requests to install carports adjacent to, uh, houses, like, there, there are. And, and this brings a, a bigger issue and, and the person who has joined us tonight for the meeting is one of the, uh, requesters of a carport. And so, um, I wanted to have a discussion because our zoning is really sort of wide and loose about these types of things. Uh, and we need to tighten them up because there are a lot of implications and there are a lot of, um, you know, potential issues with, with carports. And so, uh, our zoning right now does not allow for any parking in front of the house, uh, other than driveway parking, right? And so, putting up a structure that, that protrudes to the front of the house is, uh, is not, uh, allowed. So that's one consideration. Another consideration is the intent of the zoning, which is to have front lawns and, you know, yards looking very nice and presentable. And so, uh, there is a gray area about the side of the house. You know, even though you're looking at the front yard, the side of the house, uh, there is an open window for allowing these types of structures. Uh, but we need to further sort of, um, discuss what we, you know, what the city wants in terms of letting people put these things. And these carports range from very cheap, very chintzy, very dangerous in, in the wind structures to really high-end, very heavy-duty, you know, carports that, that would go on the side of the house nicely. Um, and again, I, I didn't want to approve any building permits without having a discussion with the city council person. Uh, so I thought we would discuss it and then I would take the feedback from the discussion and formulate a zoning amendment to, you know, to the zoning law and potentially, uh, uh, an ordinance as well. Um, but some of the things to consider, I did a SWOT analysis to make Larry happy. And, uh, you know, so some of the strengths, um, you know, it's a inexpensive alternative to a garage. Um, it encourages residents to move vehicles off the street and potentially out of the front yard if they, if it's a gray area about where the, you know, where the driveway ends. They're pretty quick to install, you know, very portable. Um, some of the weaknesses include, you know, it can really detract from neighborhood status. Um, and it could actually reduce property values if not done properly. Um, and, uh, and then there's also some potential for stormwater runoff, uh, drainage issues, flooding, and so on and so forth. Uh, some of the opportunities, you know, just gives us an opportunity to talk about this and, and have some cleaner, clearer standards. And, uh, allows us, you know, for some flexible solutions for, uh, properties that, you know, have maybe a one-car garage, uh, or very limited parking. Um, and the threats, if it stays unregulated, it could lead to a serious mismatch between properties. Um, it could open up the door for makeshift structures. You know, people could put up a couple of bowl, or a couple of holes and, and some, you know, plywood and call it a carport, you know, these, this is, you know, we definitely don't want that. Um, and then, uh, that pushing of the boundaries with these semi-permanent versus permanent structures could, could lead to some legal challenges, uh, down the road. So, um, some of the things that we need to think about here are, you know, if carports are allowed, does there need to be a cement slab that, you know, that the vehicle's getting parked on? Is a gravel slab okay? Do you require any slab whatsoever? Um, right now, our, our zoning is not very restrictive. How's the water runoff going to be managed? You know, you want to make sure if somebody's putting in gravel or a slab, that it's not tilted toward their house, but also not tilted toward their neighbor's house. You know, that runoff is really important. And then, uh, so some of the questions that I prepared for you all to discuss is, do we want to, A, allow carports at all on the side of the house? Um, and if so, what should those conditions be, like minimum distance from the lot lines, uh, what surface type? Are there going to be design standards? You know, do you want it to look cohesive with the house or is any carport structure fine? Do you want it to go through a case-by-case approval with, like, maybe a city council member at knee as a, as a zoning board type of thing? So those are, those are the initial questions that we need to, um, get over and then we can move on in this document once, once those things are clear.
I think they're starting to keep the property in town that has cars.
That was my question, I just wrote down, how many do we have in town now?
I, I don't, I haven't driven around town to count them yet, there, there are several. And typically with something like that, ones that are already installed would typically be grandfathered, you know, into the law, like whoever, you know, tell me I have to take it down. Typically, the way we did this back in Chicago is if the zoning changes, uh, then the property is locked in until that property is sold. And when the property is sold, it has to come into compliance.
Well, I need to see anything that would, would not be structurally sound for one. Adhere with footings or whatever it might be, if it's a cement pad, then it needs, like garage walls are put in. I think enough of us have had winds in that, we know what the winds can do in this town. And something that would be flimsy would not be good.
I also think some of it's going to be case by case, depending on where their property is and where they're wanting to put it in too, so. And that also should, might determine.
And then the property line too.
Yeah, maintaining so much distance between property. Like, I say if I did it next to my neighbor, it's going to be right on top of his house.
Well, and I think a lot of people have, like, shared driveways and, like, that's, that would cause issues too.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, it's almost going to be.
Yeah, I could just build a garage right in a little more driveway. We own it.
We do not have like a zoning board anymore.
We, we don't, but it would be very simple to establish one typically in smaller communities that seem like the city administrator, uh, and a city council member, you know, sort of acts as, as the zoning board and do case by cases, um, you know, so we can easily establish one and, and have an ordinance for that ready to go for the next meeting, you know, if that's what you guys want.
I mean, I, I wouldn't mind that, I would also see, I'd like to see, I guess, what other towns maybe do, you know, do they allow it or some of their rules that maybe we could?
Yeah, I started the research at this week and, and they're all over the place. Some, some municipalities are very libertarian and just your property, do what you want. Um, when you look at the property values in, in those communities, they're typically not the same as property values, you know, here or in communities with tighter standards and then at the same time, you don't want to handcuff everybody and control everybody's property in every detail, that's, that's no fun either, um, so, but, uh, but I do think if they are allowed, we should have some standards, um, you know, and, and not just, especially against the makeshift structures because to your point, the winds can be, you know, a piece of plywood that goes flying around in 60 mile an hour wind can kill somebody.
Yeah, it's got to be structurally sound.
Yeah. So I could like look into, like, first, I, it seems like there's consensus that in some way we want to maybe allow it, um, with, you know, structural integrity, so I could look at what some of those standards might be, there's probably, um, you know, building structure, um, what can I say, criteria that certain carports would meet, you know, I could look into those standards and put that into the zoning, uh, and say if it meets this level or higher, you know, then that's one checkbox, uh, and I also do like the case by case basis, um, as long as we have clear criteria on how we're judging those cases, so that we're not.
I think the case by case.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Well, that's maybe in there, we're just saying like per street, the houses are closer together than say the street that I live on, there's more distance between houses, so.
Yeah.
I think we set some standards and then maybe just do a case by case.
Yeah.
Or just maybe get approval or whatever.
Or with the zoning. Well, on like your street, you know, you could put it on your, at the alley, whereas that's, that's not the case for everybody.
Yeah, yeah, like, and right now the two advocates are like on commercial street, so it's like as you're driving into town, you're.
You're going to see it.
You're going to see it, right, so, you know, I want to make sure that we get it right, so, so what I'm hearing so far is generally we want to have a pathway to be able to do it as long as we can meet standards, uh, structural standards, uh, property line standards, so we'll probably increase the lot line setbacks, you know, right now it's two feet, um, you know, maybe we could, you know, see what other communities are doing with bigger setbacks and, uh, work along those guidelines and then, uh, the structural integrity, you know, uh, and then slab, you know, either cement or gravel, uh, something should be under it for, you know, just that support, um, so is that, is that generally kind of where everybody's at?
Yeah.
Yes, I'd like to see that, but for instance, on Spring Street where we live, just down there, our, if we, and I would like to have a, uh, something like that, but about four, our driveway or the slab of cement that's beside our garage, about four feet of that is in nating and everyone down that street's property is kind of messed up in a certain way, in the, in the same way, it was just, it's been that way for years and, you know, we're going to have to allow some complac, some modifications because I, I would guess we all live on streets which are slightly different from someone else's street and somehow it has to work. Why don't you just buy that, why don't you just buy that land for nating and then it's yours and you could put your carport out there. I, maybe I should talk. Well, maybe I guess you could be open. Then I have to mow it. Do you not mow it already? No, I mow it, I take care of it. But, oh, you, you left the carport area to? The carport has been there probably for forty, fifty years for months.
I think you should put a parking meter on there. Let people pay for parking.
Yeah, then the gas truck comes in and loads it.
Yeah, all right, so, so i- if we do the zoning board, uh, so what I'm hearing is standards, I don't have to reiterate those, uh, zoning board, they'll plug into the zoning board update ordinance to, uh, I think a good process is the zoning committee, uh, says no, that a person could appeal to the entire board.
Sure.
That'd be a good standard process and then, uh, usually requiring like a super majority, so instead of like three, two, you know, requiring four votes of the, of the board to overturn a, a denial, um, and that way it gives everybody an appeal, um, and, uh, yeah, I think that, that's a super fair way to do it.
So you and maybe a city council and a couple citizens in town on the board?
Probably just three people, like, you know, I think, I don't think we need more than three, so we'll do a city council member, we'll do myself and then, um, uh, and it, it, it might be actually smart to put like one of the public works guys on it because they, they really understand the mechanics of the water.
Yeah, they're the ones that go out and, yeah, they do the measurements and what they say.
So if we do three, a three person board like that and then if that board says no, uh, then the applicant can appeal to the entire city council and then we'll just plug in a, a super majority vote to overturn it.
I'd be willing to be on that.
Okay.
And somebody else consider, uh, change it.
All right, well, that's it, that's a, we'll do, we'll have that discussion when we bring the, uh, the ordinance forward.
Yeah, okay.
And then, uh, and then we can figure out how to appoint or who that city council member is going to be, um, yep.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. All right, moving on to number 15, resolution 2542 approving purchase of a water heater for the city pool splash pad.
Also move for the purchase.
A second. Motion second.
All right, uh, the water heater for the splash pad does not work, um, when they fired it up, it just went on strike and said, sorry, um, and, uh, so it just does lead to a bigger discussion, so A, it's not needed per se for this pool season, the water is already over 80 degrees and it's going to stay pretty cool, um, but for future seasons, you know, if, if the pool's going to open next season earlier, um, we will need that heater, um, so we could put this off until after this pool season and when the city council decides to, uh, to look at the season how it went and make a longer term decision, uh, so we could either table it or we could approve the purchase but, um, pending, uh, you know, that discussion month, you know, months from now when the, when the season's over or we can just table it.
How often is the water heater, like how often is it used?
It would be used every day, but it's, so like what would happen is let's.
Maybe no water, I mean, if it's 90 degrees, I would not use it when it's 90 degrees.
No, it would, it would just maintain the temperature, so if the temperature went down, it would, it would maintain it, so like right now it'll just fluctuate, it'll cool off a little bit at night, it will get hot during the day, um, nobody seems super concerned about the water temperature, it's pretty warm already, so, um, but if we were to open earlier in the season, let's say we had a normal season, like that first month, the water would be pretty cold.
I think we just table it on the. You know, we had a rough go against this season, don't you know?
Yeah, we don't want to bring, if we don't need it.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Table it till next spring, fall or whatever.
Well, let's, let's maybe, I'll bring it back up, like when the pool season closes and we have a report of the pool season and how it went and that we guys can make a longer term decision on the pool, then we can add that in, because it, we, like, we would love to get the, uh, love to buy it this year, right, obviously every year we put it off, the price goes up, so if we know we're going to lose it in, you know, three months, you know, may as well buy it, yeah, you know, yeah, so, all right.
All right, thank you.
So someone has to move to table it.
Make motion table it.
All right, motion second to table the approval of purchase of a water heater for the splash pad. Any other questions? Not vote to vote, Michelle?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Number 16, resolution 2543 approving annual COLA and pay adjustment.
I still move for resolution 2543 for the annual COLA and pay adjustment. Second.
Motion second.
Great, so this is, as we've talked about, you know, having a more stable, um, annual financial model, like this is the, um, the COLA increase that we did last year, um, and it's not only COLA, but it's a little bit of an adjustment for, uh, one or two of the staff members, um, this actually came in a little bit less than, than we budgeted for, we were budgeting for 3% across the board, this came in, uh, under that, like 2.85% and, uh, you'll see, um, a couple of cases that I want to point out, um, one, like I've foregone a COLA increase, like I don't need it and I would rather the money be used elsewhere, um, and the, uh, Garrett's, uh, has a 6.42% increase, this was lobbied for by Eric who, uh, you'll notice is only 1.7%, he wanted, um, some of his COLA increase to go to, uh, bring Garrett's, um, compensation up to what he thought was an acceptable level. And then the other one is Rita who works here in the office, um, you know, she, in my opinion, was grossly underpaid, um, and then, you know, having the pool open and having, you know, people working there making more than her, she's very skilled labor with G Works, you know, there's only three people in this community that know how to use our software and, uh, I think that's, uh, what I have here is a very fair wage.
Does that have, how many hours a week?
Twenty, um, between 20 and 24, um, just depending, it's part time, that increase would account, would be, would be about a $2,000 increase, um, annually on the budget, so.
Well, and like you said, it puts her in line with like people at the library and stuff like that too, so, you know, kind of comparable.
Can I ask, why are we doing the library one? I thought that board did that.
The board does do it.
Always in the past, we've never, ever done it, so I'm just curious, that's why.
Yeah, no, as, as I, I think I mentioned a couple meetings ago, that when the, um, the pool discussion came up and we decided to up the wages for lifeguards and pool managers, that had a ripple effect across anybody that wasn't making what we were advertising for lifeguards, so, um, and the, um, I think we did, did we do COLA for any library employees last year, I thought that we did.
Yes, you did.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we did and, yeah, in fact, because I think this, I pulled this right from last year's, um, resolution, uh, while the, the library board does do its own policies, they are employees of the city.
Correct.
And, uh, and this is done in conjunction with the library board, like we've discussed, like we're not unilaterally telling them, okay, here you're all getting, like, we've been working with the library board to come up with these.
Got you. So my next question was, how do we go about this, is this just cost of living and then people get like their annual raise or this is it?
So that, so there's not really annual raises, like this is a cost of living adjustment and we don't have a structured raise, uh, we look at the finances, um, we can consider raises based on our fiscal position, we can look at raises based on merit, we, I, I'm not a big fan of having just a structured pay raise.
But we've had like a set plan in place, is that just out the window now?
Uh, for.
Well, I think everybody that's here has maxed out.
Yeah, yeah, everybody's at the, at the peak of that, so, we're looking at COLA increases, if we do the COLA increase appropriately and we're tracking with inflation, which by the way, this is, uh, this is tracking with inflation, this is, you know, very, the percentage is very well thought out, um, and, you know, I think raises need to be looked at, you know, after we have our full financial picture from our, our fiscal position, uh, we're constantly doing research to make sure that we're competitive, um, so, you know.
So when do you plan on doing those raises?
I'm not planning on having a day that we're going to have a raise, like I'm monitoring the situation and I think like in the case of Rita and in the case of Garrett, like these are, you know, these are essentially raises above and beyond the COLA, so if something were to stand out at some point in the future as inappropriate, I would bring that up on a case by case.
I'm just curious if we should put like a process in place where we're doing reviews and then kind of like one on ones with them, with the employees, you know?
And I do do that, like, I mean, I'm in constant communication with all employees for the city with the exception of library employees, because they, they do report to Patty and so on and so forth, so I feel super comfortable that I've got my pulse on performance and, uh, and I also, you know, I feel strongly that we need to pay appropriately for skill set and performance, um, you know, we don't really have a bonus structure in place, many municipalities do, so I think if we can stay on track with cost of living increases and if we tend to fall behind other communities in what they're doing in terms of like base compensation, then I could bring those to the board on a case by case, um, and I, I think doing it in a structured way makes it harder to have individuals who shine and outperform, you know, if, if it's all structured, then everybody starts to behave the same because everybody's getting paid the same, you know, and it's, uh, yeah, it's, it's just kind of a gray area. This is how I prefer to do it, but I'm completely open to how the city council wants me to do it, um, but like this is how I ran my company, this is how I ran, you know, like cost of living increases and then adjustments where, where needed.
Yes, my opinion is, and not against any of this, I would just like to see like performance reviews done or, you know, something like feedback that the council can review, you know, I, I don't sit up here every day and I'm not in town all day long, so I don't know what goes on, I guess just, I, it would be nice to see some feedback from like your review or your one on one you do or whatever.
I, I could do some summary of it, it, it's not typically appropriate for a city council to look at performance reviews of anybody other than their one employee, which would be me, um, so, uh, I, I am happy to, um, I could summarize, um, performance on a case by case and, you know, maybe put a, a small report together that just talks about accomplishments and this and that, but I would not be comfortable sharing like the particulars of a performance review, uh, because anything that I share with you has to be public information and if there was, um, any sort of corrective, anything that's on a performance review or in a discussion or in their file, it would be really inappropriate to make that public.
As long as you're doing it and you agree.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm, as Jesse will tell you, as the chief will tell you, like, I've got the pulse on the day to day and, um, you know, I take a little crap, but I don't take a lot of crap.
And then I'm assuming all the full time employees they work 40 hours.
Yes, sometimes more.
Yeah.
So are, are we allowed to speak, and we're probably not allowed to speak in particular people without going to.
You can, you can, I mean, if you get uncomfortable, you know, like, so you'll have to decide if it's, if the juice is worth the squeeze.
Okay, I, I'm just wondering, like, what, like the, like for, like Wessels, that amount, what does that all include for us? It says per pay period, so.
So, because he, he, that's.
Like a contract.
Yeah, he's a contractor for it, he's actually not an employee, so that's a contract rate.
Is that X amount of hours that we give him for or, and what, what is that per pay period?
Yeah, he's part time, so he's, he's about, how many hours a week, about 20, 20 to 20.
So we're looking at 40, this is for, that would be for 40 hours for him.
Right, like this is a, he only gets paid every other pay period, which is why he's the only one that uses per pay period, because that's, he gets paid a monthly stipend every other pay period.
So that's, it says right here, he gets whatever, 20 per pay period, so then he gets.
Per, per, it should say per, per his pay period, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's his monthly amount.
So that's looking at eight, that's for like 80 hours worth of that, because you're saying 20 hours a week?
Right, that's, yeah, half time, exactly.
Sure. And he's not called quite a bit for it.
He's, he's so grossly on, on all of it.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm just curious, what's the, like, what am I?
Yeah, absolutely, sorry, and I should have, I should have put that that was monthly, that was an oversight.
Any other questions? Now we'll go to vote, Larry?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you very much. All right, other questions?
No other questions. Happy Fourth of July, please keep your fingers. We'll see everybody in Michelle's house at 10:20.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you. That motion, you probably love it.
Oh, um, sorry, one more thing, I, I have preliminary, uh, budget numbers, so these are literally hot off the press, unverified, unaudited, um, budget versus actual for this last fiscal year, so I'm going to give you a report by next week, this could be significantly different, but I wanted you guys to have a.
I was doing your bond, I know.
Sure, and then if there's any questions on this or whatever the format or any questions, just throw it to us.
Thank you.
Sure.